For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If you have a copy of the agenda, you'll notice Public Comments is item number two. We usually reserve a space here for someone who wants to speak to the commission. Either we haven't had satisfaction with the staff, or something's important you want us to consider at a future date. We'll listen to you now. Anyone has something to talk about? Yes, sir, come forward. Please. Need your name and address for the record.
My name is Randy Gardner. Address is...
What, is it on? Okay.
Randy Gardner. Address is 11569 Geranium Place.
Yes, sir. Welcome.
We are here tonight to address the situation of the completion of the subdivision, the Parish Glen subdivision. It's been completed for a good year now, but there are still issues that have not been completed that the residents in this subdivision would like to see done.
Okay. Planning manager's not here. Mr. Manager?
Yeah. Mr. Gardner, if you'd like to provide me with a list of those, I could be glad. Have you discussed it with our staff yet at all?
Yes, I have. I've talked to Sean Cook in the planning department.
Okay.
And he, in fact, was the one that instructed me to come to one of these meetings to try to get some more answers. He had said that it was basically out of his hands at this time.
Okay.
And the issue, the main issue is the tree planting along the streets.
Okay.
It's something that I know a lot...
Could you sit down and go to the mic there and be a little easier for us? Yes.
The tree issue has been addressed multiple times by individuals as individuals, and we never seem to get anywhere. It's something that I have found in your city code, Chapter 12.08.020, the actual tree planting requirements. And it does state in there that all new construction is to have trees along the streets.
Yeah.
It's something that every time it's addressed with the Planning Commission or anybody else that we've tried to contact, it's always been told, "Go to the builder. It's the builder's responsibility. Go to the developer. It's the developer's responsibility." We go to one or the other, they tell us to go to the other one, and we get absolutely nowhere.
Okay.
And that's the reason of us being here tonight. We would like to see our subdivision completed, as the subdivision that attaches to ours is complete. It does have the trees.
Tell me where it is, so I can...
It's out, basically on city limits, out Central Point Road.
Okay.
And the other slight issue in this as well is the completion of the street frontage of the water retention pit in that subdivision.
Okay.
Very messy looking. I think I've seen city employees out there one time in the year that I've been living there. Even if it was permission for the residents to do something with that piece of property would be adequate. I'm sure we would all do something to make it look better than it looks now.
Okay. Great. Mayor, members of the commission, if I might. What I'll do is I'll get Mr. Gardner's phone number. I'll follow up on this and provide an update at the next commission meeting. I will speak with Mr. Collessen, our engineering manager, who is responsible for signing off on the subdivision, and we will see what the parameters were for the planting of the street trees and also for the retention pond.
I'd also like to say that, you know, we've had these same issues come up with other things. One in particular was the final paving of the streets in that subdivision.
Okay.
Basically, it was like pulling teeth to get that done as well. I don't know if there's an issue with the builder slash developer that they're trying to get out of with the city. I have no idea. But my whole issue here is, is that we, as residents of Parish Glen, did not enter a contract with the builder or the developer. The City of Oregon City did. And so whether or not it's their responsibility or not, it is the responsibility of the city to enforce these.
Right.
Mr. Gardner, Mr. Holliday, ask a question for you.
Who is the developer?
I do not know who the developer is. The builder is Sepala Homes.
And they built all of the houses in the subdivision?
All 50, yes.
Okay. Thanks.
We appreciate getting it out as soon as possible, and if you give him his phone number, Mr. Alec.
Have we, do you know, have we signed off on that? Has the city signed off on that? Do we know that?
We don't know.
That's what I was going to follow up with, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
So make sure you give him the number. You do right now, if you would. Thank you for coming. We appreciate that. Anybody else?
I'd give him a chance to leave.
Yeah. If you don't want to be bored with the rest of the meeting, you can leave if you wish. But if you'd like to stick around, it can be interesting sometimes.
If we're in the same subdivision, do we need to give him our...
No, no. If you're confident that he can work for you, that's fine. Okay? That's good. But you're certainly welcome to do that, too, if you wish. Well, I took care of the audience all right.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Sorry about that. Nice meeting you, my friend, yes. You should have told us then. She was sitting next to us having coffee. Over at, having coffee, and she was sitting next to us. We chatted with her a bit.
So you guys are hatching plots again?
Yeah. All right. Thank you very much. So item number... Mr. Manager? Okay.
3.1.
Oh, great. Sorry, ma'am.
It's all right.
Mayor, members of the commission, Agenda Item 3.1 is the Oregon City School District Zone Change from Clackamas County FU-10, Future Urban 10-Acre Minimum to City of Oregon City, CI Campus Industrial, Clackamas County Map, 3S-3E-9D, Tax Lots 1200, ZC-01-02. Mayor, members of the commission, Ms. Maggie Collins is here to make a brief presentation to you regarding this matter.
Good evening, Ms. Collins.
Good evening. Okay. Is it on?
It's on.
Okay. Thank you.
You have to speak loud, remember.
In your packet, you will find the application and an ordinance. And the request here is from the Oregon City School District to change the zone on a portion of their large 83-acre site so that it's consistent with the rest of the zoning on the property. At this time, it is FU-10, the county future urban 10-acre minimum lot size, and the designation was, well, residential. And at this time, the request is that the zone be changed to the campus in, yes, I think that's right, the Campus Industrial Zone. And the property needed to be annexed into the city. That happened. And after the annexation, then the zone change was requested, and the Planning Commission reviewed it and recommended that you do indeed adopt this request.
Any questions of Maggie? Doug?
Just one. I don't think, I don't think it's the case on this one. It was, in fact, in the comprehensive plan indicated as a residential area. Is that right?
No, actually, it was designated as industrial.
Okay.
And the issue is that if a comprehensive plan designation is industrial, then there's three zones that can be applied to that industrial plan designation, whereas residential, there's only one zone that automatically goes on, and that would be the R-10. So the applicant must then request and choose the zone category to match the plan designation. In this case, they chose CI.
Questions of Maggie? All right. This is a public hearing, so we'll... Thank you, Maggie, for that. We need regular warnings from the city attorney?
Tonight, we have on the agenda an on-the-record quasi-judicial hearing of an appeal of a zone change request. The applicable criteria listed in the staff report, all argument must be directed toward the applicable approval criteria. If you believe other criteria apply in addition to those addressed in the staff report, you must identify and discuss those criteria and explain why you believe they apply to the application that is being considered. However, the issues are limited to those raised before the Planning Commission. If the city council makes a decision you disagree with, any issue you want to raise on appeal has to have been raised for the city commission's consideration. Failure to raise an issue on the record with sufficient specificity to afford the city and all parties an opportunity to respond to the issue, or preclude an appeal on that issue to the Land Use Board of Appeals. Moreover, the failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the city to respond to the issue, or preclude an action for damages in Circuit Court.
Thank you. I'll open the public. All right. There's a declaration here of...
I just want to say that my company, the company that I'm employed with, may or may not bid on the electrical portion of the Oregon City High School project, and just want to put that out so that it's available.
Right. And that's not an actual conflict of interest, but it's a potential conflict of interest in disclosing this.
Thank you for that. I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak for? Anyone here speaking again? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Gentlemen, your wishes.
Well, I have a question at this point.
Sure.
Commissioner Neely, with our concurrence, has asked that we receive the Planning Commission minutes from, you know, for these kinds of applications. And I understand that it came to my fax machine late in the day today. I didn't get it till I got here today. But my bigger question, one is, you know, why wasn't it included? And two, are these approved minutes from the Planning Commission? Have they gone through and been adopted by the Planning Commission, would be my bigger question?
The...
Because they say draft on them.
It does say draft, and that was intentional, because they have not been reviewed by the Planning Commission for approval. They are the regular minutes, and we apologize for not getting them into the packet. Part of it is a timing issue with the recording secretary getting them available for either the Planning Commission, and in this case, there was a glitch. So we tried to get you the draft as soon as we could, and you did get it. They will review these meeting minutes at their next meeting on Monday and likely approve them or do something with them.
Thank you, ma'am.
Just to follow up on that, mayor, that, members of the commission, essentially, they may, we may have future problems like this. If the Planning Commission hears an item and it goes to the city commission immediately thereafter, we may, because of the timing, it takes approximately one to three weeks to get the minutes back from a Planning Commission meeting, that we may run into that again. The other is my fault, because Ms. Bronson Crowley was at a conference last week, and it was my responsibility to do the packet, so it may not look...
And here, I was going to compliment you on the packet. You stuff them very well.
I believe there's an attempt to get these to us in about a month's time, from the time the Planning Commission hears them. But if we have this issue, unless we have something as a dire emergency, is there any problem with waiting for six weeks approximately, so that the Planning Commission does have a chance to review those minutes and come back to us, rather than have a constraint put upon the staff? Especially since your department in particular has staff problems.
There shouldn't be a problem, and I wouldn't, we'll just monitor it very carefully and try to do a better job next time. One of the things about putting a six-week limitation on the Planning Commission versus the city commission hearing could be a 120-day clock problem. And I, we think that, well, one, we like to move these things along so that the customer is best served and can get through a process all the way. So we just will be real careful.
Commissioner Holliday?
And just to reinforce my issue is that technically, this isn't a valid document before me until the Planning Commission's had an opportunity to review them and approve them, because they aren't official minutes until that point in time. So, you know, should we make a decision, and then they change something, maybe they won't change anything substantial, but maybe they will, and I, you know, that may or may not put us in some kind of a legal quandary later on, so...
Yeah, I do, I do understand your concern. The other thing that we ought to do for this hearing is, at least for the record, I should mention that a copy of the Planning Commission minutes for June 25th for both public hearings was delivered to the city commission prior to this meeting.
I got it.
Also, mayor, members of the commission, the other issue that may come up is an election issue. If it needs to get to a ballot by a certain time, there may be a need to put forward to the commission for approval, the item.
Without having the...
Without having the Planning Commission minutes.
One more question. Maggie, in these, in this case, and the one that's coming up, are either of these crucial in terms of the 120-day limit? That is, do you see any kind of, I wouldn't presume so on these, since there's zone changes, but is there any issue that would preclude us from actually effectively tabling this into the next commission meeting?
The time limits are getting very near, and I'm not sure that we wouldn't, in the Oregon City School District one, have to go back and have them request a waiver and do a lot of legal re-noticing and everything. So I would, I guess I would ask you to take that summary on its face value as accurate proceedings of the discussion and so on, and kind of move ahead on it.
Yeah. For the record, I have no problem with that. Commissioner?
Mr. Mayor, move to approve ordinance 01-1023.
Mayor, members of the commission, if I can just make one final...
Get a second on it?
Absolutely.
Second.
All right.
Just in terms of the ordinance, there's a minor amendment. The, there isn't a sentence that kind of says, "This is what it's going to do," and I would propose adding a sentence that said, "The property described in Attachment B is hereby rezoned from FU-10 to CI Campus Industrial on the official zoning map."
I will incorporate that amendment into my motion, if the second will approve.
All right. Thank you for that. Any further discussion?
And that's first reading, I assume?
Right. Ordinance number 01-1023, an ordinance amending Title 17 zoning, Chapter 1706 30 of the official zoning map of the Oregon City Municipal Code of 1991 by changing certain districts. And let me read the section that has the amendment. "The application is hereby approved as to this particular property with the attached findings and conclusions, Attachment A, and the subject property is identified as Clackamas County Assessor Map, 3S, 2E, 09D, Tax Lot 1200, Attachment B. The property described in Attachment B is hereby rezoned from FU-10 to CI Campus Industrial on the official zoning map."
Call and roll, please.
Commissioner Holliday?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner Alec?
Aye.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Aye.
Aye.
Agenda Item 3.2 is the Thomas Hert Zone Change from R-10 to Single Family Dwelling District to RD-4, Two-Family Dwelling District, Clackamas County Map, 3S, 3E, 6DB, Tax Lots 1700 and 1800, ZC number 01-03. Mayor, members of the commission, this is a public hearing. And subsequent to the public hearing, city staff recommends the city commission uphold the recommendation made by the Planning Commission on June 25th, 2001, and adopt the proposed ordinance number 01-1024.
Yes.
It applies to this ordinance, but it actually applies to the previous one. We take in the stance that we don't do second readings unless we have an emergency before us, and I presume this does not put a bind on you. The second reading will not come until the next meeting. Okay. That probably covered the issue. We probably have the minutes in hand by that time.
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry. All right. Is there staff input on this, or is it...
Yeah. Mayor, members of the commission, Ms. Maggie Collins is here to provide that.
In the case of this request, as your staff packet lays it out, the plan designation on this property has been, and continues, or has been correct with a different zone on it. The medium-density residential plan designation carries an RD-4 zone. Up to this time, the median plan designation had the underlying R-10 zone. The applicant has requested that zone change. The Planning Commission found that the request was reasonable in that indeed the requested zone district and its minimum lot sizes did fit the plan designation. And based upon that, they recommend that you, and the other criteria, that you approve this plan zone change request.
This property is right on the curve, right near Mount Pleasant School.
Yes. Yeah, there's a map in your packet on, as Attachment B.
Commissioner?
I'm curious as to the issue of when something comes in after annexation into the zoning pattern FU-10, from FU-10 into R-10 designation, and in fact, in the comprehensive plan, it is identified as medium-density. If we have the comprehensive plan actually identifying the areas as medium-density, why don't we bring it into a different holding, rather than an automatic R-10?
We can't answer that. That's certainly what we would recommend that the applicant do today. This is a longstanding situation from past times, when the plan designation seemed to be the real essential thing, and there were really no development attempts or real plans at that time. But as various individual property owners have looked at their property, they've looked at all the options, and in this case, we're matching the zone to the plan designation. So that's how it came about.
Thanks for that. Anything else of Maggie? All right. Previous warnings apply, I assume?
Yes. The same...
And I guess while I'm here, if I might, Mr. Mayor, is just to ask the city attorney, and he's probably already done it, that with this ordinance, too, we would want to add that since this property is hereby rezoned from R-10 to RD-4.
Yes.
All right. I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak for? Anyone speak again? Public hearing is closed. Discussion?
It's not a discussion on this, because I didn't see it. But we had, on the last commission meeting, we did have something come before us where apparently not every property owner was notified of a subdivision in this particular case. Now, I went by that property last time, and I noticed there was actually no signage indicating there'd be a public hearing on that either, and it didn't occur to me to mention at this meeting. I hope that the signage is up there that will trigger people to realize that this public hearing is occurring on the property. We seem to have some things falling through on us in terms of public notice.
I don't know what specifically. Are you talking about the meeting, last meeting with Jim Hall, saying that he didn't get noticed?
He didn't get noticed, but at the same time, when I went by the property, there was no signage to indicate there was a public hearing on it. And it didn't, it didn't really register on that until after, after we had that commission made.
I believe the signs that you're talking about, when there's a land use action, we require the applicant to sign an affidavit to say that they posted them on the site. But I think what you're saying is you'd like a little more follow-up from staff to go out and check and see if they've been posted?
Something needs to happen, because I did not see the signage.
Well, the ultimate question for me, I guess, would be, is there a sign on this property? Has there been a sign for the last few weeks, the big blue and white sign that says there's going to be a land use action and a public hearing on this issue?
I can't answer that. I haven't driven by the property.
I believe there has been a sign by there every day, and I think I saw that sign, so...
I know that there's all kinds of signs throughout the community when there's land use actions. I don't...
And I realize the strange undermating, and I appreciate them, but the public notification issue is extremely important.
All right. Mr. Mayor? Yes.
We agree that the public notification process is one of the ones that we need to always keep an eye on and do everything we can to make sure that property owners know. Sometimes, people don't get notified for whatever reason, because of the labels, of course, that the applicant is required to bring in for the notification 300 feet around the property, or whatever. And in the main, we believe that the most reliable way for notification is individual household by mail notification. And 99 times out of 10, that gives the proper legal notification for an action on some property. The sign business gets tricky, but as Mr. Cosgrove has indicated, it is the responsibility as part of the action before the Planning Commission meeting to make sure that the property is well-signed. And they sign, they sign an affidavit that they have done so. But we know what happens with signs, and if they're taken down, or blown down, or something happens to them, and we're obliged to check every day to see that the sign is still up for a two-week period, we, as the city, incur expenses in time and resources in those events, and it happens more often than you would think. And we also think that maybe the adjacent property owners do not see the signs and aren't notified. So, you know, we want to do everything that we can, but in the main, the mail notification is a proper and most legal way to go, we believe.
Thank you for that, Maggie. Is there a motion here?
Mr. Mayor, move to approve ordinance, first reading of ordinance 01-1024 with the amendment.
The property described in Attachment B is hereby rezoned from R-10, Single Family Residential, to RD-4, Two-Family Residential.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Reading, please. Seconds.
Ordinance 01-1024, an ordinance amending Title 17 zoning, Chapter 17.06.30 of the official zoning map of the Oregon City Municipal Code of 1991 by changing certain districts. And I'll read the section that has been amended. "This application is hereby approved as to this particular property with the attached findings and conclusions, Attachment A, and the subject property is identified as Clackamas County Assessor Map, 3S, 2E, 6DB, Tax Lots 1700 and 1800, Attachment B. The property described in Attachment B is hereby rezoned from R-10, Single Family Residential, to RD-4, Two-Family Residential."
Call and roll, please.
Commissioner Holliday?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner Alec?
Aye.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Aye.
Mayor Williams?
Aye. Great. Agenda...
That's all public hearings.
Yes. On to resolutions. Resolution. Agenda Item 5.1 is the Resolution Number 01-27, creating this Oregon City-Tadashina Sister City Committee. Mayor, members of the commission, city staff recommends that the city commission approve Resolution Number 01-27, creating the Oregon City-Tadashina Sister City Committee.
I was kind of aghast when I, a couple of years ago, discovered it wasn't an official committee. They've been working at this for, as we say here, 26 years. They've made a lot of visits to Tadashina, and in reverse, they've entertained a lot of people in the city, and they came forward and requested this three, four months ago that this might happen, and that's why it's on your agenda.
I haven't, I'm going to prove it. I do have a question or two, though. And one is, do more formal bylaws come to us in this process?
Yes. Then Mary Palmer gives them the sample, and they make out their bylaws, and they come back and are...
Right. This is just a...
Go ahead.
Oh, no. It's a formation of the committee, and then the bylaws will follow with Ms. Palmer.
And I'm just checking. The bylaw, once they're established, the bylaws is, do we, does this go through the informal application process? When the, when a position comes up for vacancy, I presume the bylaws will, in fact, have some kind of term. When these positions come up for vacancies, will there be formal notifications for application?
That is my understanding of that process, and then the appointment would come from the mayor after the applications are received.
The only reason I ask this question is we've had a couple new, at least one new commission formed, the Arts Commission. I don't know if we've got, do we have the Natural Resources Commission?
No, we have the Treaty Committee.
And I think we get some people in there to get it started, but at one point or another, do we go through the informal application process?
I anticipate there will be. I believe there's a committee already established at this point.
Yeah, they have the members already, yes.
Right. And once the committee members start to then turn over, then the application process would then begin.
Well, actually, we, I don't mean to correct you here, but we do ask them to fill out that application chart, and they do come back, and we go through the process you're talking about.
But there would be an advertisement process and the replacement of any committee member.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, move to approve Resolution 01-27.
Second.
For the discussion? Call and roll?
Commissioner Holliday?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner Alec?
Aye.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Aye.
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Okay. Commission decision items. Agenda Item 6.1 is a personal services agreement for the 12th and Washington Street Traffic Signal Project. Mayor, members of the commission, staff recommends the commission authorize the city manager to execute the personal services agreement with Harper Hoff Regalas, Inc., for the 12th[1771.78] and Washington Traffic Signal Project. Mayor, members of the commission, Ms. Nancy Crushar is here to answer any questions you may have. The one amendment to the staff report we'd like to make is that this be paid for out of transportation SDC funds solely rather than divided up among urban renewal funds. And Ms. Crushar will be here to explain that if you wish.
I guess my question, I think somebody else asked too, this significant, the last two in the list aren't even close.
Was there a difference in their bids? Something wrong there?
Well, I wanted to clarify that these aren't bids. These are proposals for professional...
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, proposals.
Consulting services, correct.
I said bid.
So, what I would guess is that perhaps they didn't understand the full scope of work. I was not... Well, I did review the final cut, but I ended up not reviewing those two particular proposals. They didn't score high enough to make the final cut. But I suspect that it was a matter of, you can't do the work for that much money and we wouldn't get a good product and we'd end up with change orders, et cetera.
Yeah. Group 19,007 was the low one I see now, which is a third of the other one.
Yeah. That's the problem. I mean, just looking at it, I would say, ooh, that team doesn't know what all is involved in this project.
Commissioner?
I hesitate to argue with you professionally, but having dealt with Group McKenzie on several projects, I'm curious that in the scope of what we do as public officials, that we wouldn't want to at least look at, if we have a, you know, if we have a project manual, if we know what the project is and these folks have looked at it and said, "We can do this for this amount of money," you know, we can hold them to that process. Why wouldn't we want to?
Well, this isn't really, it's not a project manual at this point. Basically, we describe what we need put there. And that includes, we describe sort of the bare bones in terms of, you need to tell us how much surveying we need to do. You need to tell us how many sheets are going to be, are going to put together in the set of plans. And you need to tell us how much the electrical engineering is going to cost on this project. And part of their responsibility is to put forth a work scope that they believe meets our needs. So, it's not quite as simple as we give them exactly what needs to be done.
No, no. I understand. And once again, I'm not trying to argue with you.
Yeah, right, right.
But there are groups of companies, or there are companies in town that, by their very size, have the economies of scale that maybe a smaller organization wouldn't have and thereby could produce that work document that you're talking about at a substantial savings compared to one of the other ones. I'm hesitant to add almost $30,000 to the scope of this project, you know, from the low bid.
Well, I guess I would say that the, what's most important to point out from a technical standpoint here is that by state statute, the cost of consulting services is not to be a factor. We are to review these based on qualifications, experience, what we believe they can, how they can perform on the contract. Similarly to, if you were going to get, I'll just use an example. Say you're going to get a divorce or something, you need a divorce attorney. You wouldn't necessarily, even though there might be a company that has certain attorneys on staff that could probably do the work, you still want to go for the guy that's going to do the best job for you. And they might be more expensive. So, that's kind of the idea of, you're not buying pieces or, you know, you're not buying tonnage of asphalt. So, you're kind of out of that competitive price world. And beyond that, these proposals were all reviewed for their qualifications and some of which the city is very fussy about, like, we're looking for specific candidates that have experience designing signals in Clackamas County. Because we don't want them to be learning on our sets of plans. Because that means that the plans might get turned around six or eight times. It's just amazing why you need to make sure you're getting consultants that have specific experience. And like I said, I reviewed the top three candidates' proposals so I can speak specifically to them.
When you said, excuse me, I'm sorry, when you say "top three," then you don't mean "top three by dollars." You mean "top three by those other qualifications."
No. By qualifications. That's correct. Yes.
And who would those have been?
I reviewed the Harper Hoff, the Gary Struthers, and the CTS.
Okay. Any other questions, Commissioner?
I'm confused because I thought I saw this come before us in the Urban Renewal Agency.
The budget, this project for the design and the construction is going to be split between SDCs and urban renewal. And for simplicity, what is easiest, just from a paperwork standpoint, is to do the consulting services using SDCs. And then when we get to the construction, split out the costs.
Didn't we have a personal service contract come before for the Urban Renewal Agency on this one?
No.
I guess I'm really confused.
The elevator we did recently?
Yeah.
No, this is brand new.
Okay. I'm sorry about that. I'm going to make kind of a request. I mean, this is a fine, maybe this will go into their scope. I will tell you that when you have signals in which the only way the pedestrian signal gets triggered is by somebody pushing on the button, usually the pedestrians aren't going to use it. They're going to go with whatever the green light is. And I'd rather have personally pedestrian signals that trigger in with a green signal in the same direction at the time and get away from these push-button jobbies unless it's an automatically triggered intersection only.
I think that's a great comment.
I think it is, too. Commissioner Allen?
I'm confused. I guess that, I'm confused to understand why we go out for these bids and we only...
I used the word "bid." I guess it's not bids.
Or proposals.
Proposal.
Well, we can take whatever. I understand that we can take, that the city can take whatever they see that the requirements are this or whatever, and this is the best company. But I wonder sometime when I see that, I don't see anything here that tells me, so I can understand it, why these others are not considered. In other words, this company can do A, B, C, D, and this company can do A, B, C, D, E, and so forth. And those are set criteria you have, like, when somebody makes a proposal, we want, we know that these guys can do A, B, C, D, E. And if you don't do A, B, C, we're not even going to consider you. That's what we're actually saying.
We do, in our request for proposals, we set out specific things that they need to address. And then we score them on how well we believe they're addressing those particular criteria. I think, I'm not sure if you're getting it, the cost of the consulting services or how we actually evaluate them from a qualitative standpoint. But I give an example of where some consultants might believe they can do survey within, say, five feet of the curb to do a street design or to do a signal. Whereas another consultant might say, "I need to go 200 feet out from the curb line because I see this project has topography issues." Or, "I see I need to go this far back because we've got a sidewalk with a very steep yard right next to it." And in sometimes spending another $10,000 on survey to begin with, you end up solving so many problems later on with inadequate data when you're getting into a design situation. And you need to fix those things. If the consultant hasn't recognized how much work needs to be done to properly complete the project, you often need to do, if you've, if you haven't read them carefully and identified where they're lacking or this or that, to get a good project, you've got to have the survey. And so, you go back later and say, you know, "Oh, my gosh, you only proposed five feet of survey on each side of the curb." You know, "We see, now that we're out in the field looking at what's actually going on, that you need to go back X number of feet." That still has to get done. It could be an oversight on our part. It could have been an oversight on their part when they did the proposal. But it was cheaper to begin with. And in the long run, it has to be done to get a project properly designed also. So, you end up paying more later, anyway.
Now, I'm really confused.
Uh-oh.
But beyond that, beyond that, let me say, this project, I think, is a, I don't think it's worthwhile. That's my opinion. I think that, I think about the Oregon City Singer Hill Light that we put in in 1981 and we took it out in 1982 because it didn't work. It backed traffic. And I think down there by, I hesitate to use the term "Kelly Field," but down by Kelly Field, that's the term. That's what I'm saying. They're trying to change us and that. But the fact is, down by Kelly Field, they put in a four-way, you know, the stop and it doesn't, and then they took it out. And I'm, and let me propose this. I submit that this will go in and I wouldn't be a bit surprised, as a taxpaying citizen, that this will be something else we have to consider because if they're going to put all this effort and all this time, and I'm wondering how well that's going to work. And I can understand some people's concerns down there. But I think to myself, boy, as I go down that hill, traffic's moving pretty good. And I understand the big picture, the bridge and all this, you know, the big picture I'm not looking at as normally, or as I'm usually being accused of by people. But the fact is, I am trying to look at the big picture thinking, hey, the traffic moves fine through there now. And all of a sudden, we decided we have to do something to tweak this a little bit. And I just think, I just think that it's a project that we have, we're taking on that I don't know what the real urgent need is. And that's my opinion. But let me say this, I would try to convince others of my, that my opinion is correct, but I'm sure that they'll, as usual, vote wrong.
If I may, since you went down that road and I'm on the commission, I'm probably the resident that's closest to that particular intersection.
Only by a couple of blocks.
But I will say, and that sees the intersection from my house. And, but I will say, I will say, this has gone, I believe, through the Traffic Advisory Committee, on which, on which George Kofus sits, who in fact is on that intersection, and Ginger Taylor, who owned a business for several years on that intersection. I have gotten complaints from every property owner at that intersection, about that intersection. I think it's one of the highest accident rate intersections in the city. People try to move off 12th Street when they think they have a break. They don't make it. It happens on an extremely frequent basis. Chief Hewitt is here and he might want to comment on the accident rate of 12th Street in Washington. Is that a high accident rate intersection?
Commissioner Neely, I remember looking up these statistics some time ago when we first identified this project. And it did have a significant number of accidents, but I don't remember the particulars at this point.
Would you say it had a high, a high rate?
It has a high rate.
Thank you.
And I don't know what he's comparing it to, but that's fine. I appreciate that. It just seems odd to me that all the people that are interested in this project live right there. I just say that, I don't know, I live in a different area of the city and we don't have projects coming forth that our neighbors get to vote on and say what we want. And I appreciate that. But I'm saying, I think it's a project that is not worthwhile. You think it's worthwhile. And I know that, so we have one-to-one here. Now, let the other guys decide.
Commissioner Neely. Commissioner Hewitt.
Yeah. I, for one, think it's a fairly important issue. And the reason I think it's an important issue is, not because traffic today flows down there fairly well, but the issue is, is this on? Okay. The issue is that it flows fairly well and that's the issue. Because I think what happens is, and we've got to recognize that for the interim right now, anyway, that people, that the, not picking on anybody at that age group, but I do know that that is the way that a lot of kids get to the early school use up there and the swimming pool, that kind of area in there. And when they go up in that area, these are new drivers. And I think that's another reason why it's real important we have something that gets them across that road safely. Because I happen to go down that hill and I happen to have people pulling in front of me. And fairly regular basis, I can see the driver on that side of the car because I'm coming down the hill and they're coming across. And typically, they're younger drivers. And I'd just like to see that intersection be safe.
I think in the proposal we made for planning money for 99, it says we also hope to punch through 12th onto McLaughlin, which would be another reason for having control at that intersection. Yes, sir?
Well, I don't think the argument is about the project, even though the commissioner on my far right would like to make it so. We've already approved the project a couple of different times in a couple of different processes. So, even if we were not to approve a personal services agreement, they'd just come back with another one.
Is there a motion?
Y'all got to say your piece. I'll say mine. Thank you very much. I do still continue to have an issue and I will probably vote my issue tonight. And that is, is that I have a real concern about us, you know, there's a huge spread in these numbers. And the folks that we're talking about, when we talk about some of these other companies or companies that we've done business with, that we know, that we've used, in the city, Kittleson Associates, we've used them all the time. There's a huge amount of dollar difference between $27,500 and $53,000. I don't know, I mean, if we were talking about a project that was, you know, 50 acres in scope and was, you know, $100 million, I could understand maybe being that particular. But when we're talking about one intersection that's a signalization, I don't know what the total cut... No, just hang on a second, Mr. Cosgrove. Let me get done here. I have a real problem spending that much extra money for something that is basically something that's done by companies all over the state all the time.
We've had a lot of...
I would just say that, having been in the city now for five years, I have experienced several traffic signal designs in this city. Some have gone extremely well and some have gone extremely poorly. And it, I would just reiterate that I feel like it's, the criteria that we used and the criteria I used when reviewing the top three proposals was, how well can this project team perform for this project? Specifically, the grading, you've got some odd, very steep slopes in there. You've got to make sure that those alignments work out well and they're safe. You've got site distance to consider. You've got placement of the signal poles, which is not that big of a deal. There are some right-of-way issues that could occur. And more importantly, that signal design is really important. And there are lots of different kinds of signals. There's interconnects. And those that have direct experience with the county on this and have done them before and know Oregon City's requirements and the county's requirements, I would favorably score in selecting a consultant. As I said, I don't want other consultants to be learning us and then we have to, you've got to give more money to get your drawings, you know? Or renegotiate. Say, no, no, we're not going to do it. Likely, if you compromise the design, you're going to have problems during construction. So, and I'm not at all arguing with you. And you know what I'd be happy to do is bring back, I would like to get this approved so we can get the project going. But I'd be happy to bring back a summary of what specifically we found about this firm that caused us to select them. And also, maybe why we didn't select some of these others you've mentioned.
Commissioner.
First of all, by understanding, it sounds like you went through a two-tiered process. One was to select the top three. And then you seem to be the primary evaluator on the top three. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Who was involved in bringing up the top three to the top?
The top three? Let's see. How many did we have here? Let's see, we had Peter Irving, John Burrell, and probably Sharon Zimmerman. They probably did the top, they did the screening for all seven of them. And then I reviewed the top three.
And could you, could you state whether the scores from those three evaluators were consistent? Was their evaluation independent or were they just discussing them together?
They do an independent evaluation and then they tally all of the numbers and then they discuss it. And that's when you can share some of your insight. Sometimes you miss something when you're reading a proposal because you get, there are a lot, a lot of paper there to go through.
Commissioner Holliday, again.
Well, again? I guess, since, you know, the project obviously needs to get done, or there are parties here that suggest that it needs to get done, my request would be in the future that we at least see a summary of each of the companies that bid and, or that made an RFP.
Thank you.
And, you know, maybe a summary score or something like that. So, we have an opportunity to evaluate a little bit on our own. I'm not suggesting that you don't have the professional expertise or anything else, but it is our responsibility as stewards of the public's money to make some decisions based on some of this. And like I said, there's a big spread here. You know, $20,000 is not insignificant.
Action?
I move to approve the personal services agreement with Harper. I don't have my glasses.
HHR.
HHR, thank you. Because even if I had my glasses, I don't think I'd say it right, incorporated.
Is there a second? Roll call.
Commissioner Holliday?
No.
Commissioner Neely?
Commissioner Neely?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
No.
Commissioner Hennig?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Yes.
Okay, agenda item 6.2 is the Pro Tem Municipal Court Judge Alternates, mayor members of the commission, this is a decision item for you and the commission.
Uh, the judge is in the audience, and according to her contract, she had to submit to us, by the way, we only have two employees, the commission that is, the judge and the city manager. The city manager takes care of all the other hiring and firings, and we take care of those too. Uh, and then she, it's her responsibility, in this case her, to, uh, let us know who her recommendations are, who she wants to use for Pro Tem. Uh, us dummies, that's people who-
Should I pick them up?
Hey, yes, I'm going to give her a chance. Um, folks who serve when she can't. And it's, uh, we have a letter from her, we have the names, and-
Good evening, gentlemen, I have, I provided you with a letter of my suggest, with my, uh-
Yes.
...request for approvals, and I provided you with supplementary materials, I don't think that I-
We got that.
...provided to the city manager.
All right.
Um, my request would be that, that the city allow me to appoint Bruce Shepley and Kevin Hunt to represent the, uh, City of Oregon City as, as Pro Tem municipal judges in the event of my absence. I don't anticipate that I would be absent very often, probably just vacations and periodically when I've got a court conflict elsewhere. It is critical, though, that we do have Pro Tems on hand, more specifically, an example would be, if I'm already in court on a matter, and it's not a regularly scheduled court date, which is Tuesday and Thursday, but perhaps a Monday or a Friday, I am on occasion asked to come up here to arraign prisoners that are in custody. Arraignments must occur within a certain period of time, so if I'm in court, not, not expecting to have to be here to arraign, to arraign someone, we really need to have somebody else that could be available, and these two gentlemen would be available. I respect them very much, I know them well, I think they would represent the city well, and in fact, I did, they are here with me, um, and I'd like to introduce them, and if you have any questions of them, they're available here, but I would ask that you would make this approval.
Before you do that, uh, I ask you the question this afternoon, and I'd like to ask you again, two is enough?
Two may not be enough, I may need the opportunity to select more, it may, it may happen that I need to have another one. I, at this point, though, that is, I'm comfortable with two, because both Mr. Shepley and Mr. Hunt are here in Oregon City. Uh, but yes, there may be occasion, it, it may occur that I need, I, I will need to have more in reserve.
And how are they compensated?
I pay them. The only time that the, uh, the Pro Tem judges paid is in the event that I've got a conflict.
Okay.
And otherwise, uh, it comes out of my pocket.
Would you like to introduce some now?
Yes, um, I'd like to introduce Kevin Hunt, you've previously met him, he's very active in city, in city community affairs, and Bruce Shepley. Uh, Mr. Shepley has, uh, has some Pro Tem experience, he has served as a Pro Tem, Pro Tem in other municipalities. Both of these gentlemen practice law here in, uh, Oregon City, and have been practicing law in Oregon City since 1984, and I think Mr. Shepley since 1985.
Any questions? Yes, Commissioner Holliday.
Well, since this came in our packet, I, I reviewed the, the charter, and, uh, it is sorely lacking on the point of Pro Tem, as far as our authority to, to make decisions. However, you did enter into a contract with us that says that we get to approve the list which you shall select from, so in this case, I'm certainly going to, uh, to bow to your discretion and your judgment, and, uh, and approve, uh, your selections for Pro Tem judges here.
Any other questions or thoughts? Yes, Commissioner? Commissioner Hewitt?
I, uh, I will, uh, go along with my Commissioner Holliday up here, and agree with that statement that he made, that I will bow to your expertise in your field.
Thank you.
And thank you for the letter.
I already bowed to you earlier, I'm not going to do it.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Motion?
Mr. Mayor, move to approve the list of Pro Tem judges as submitted by, uh, her honor, Lorraine McNeese.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Holliday?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner Alex?
Aye.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Aye.
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Great, agenda item 6.3 is the Oregon City Charter Review Committee. Mayor members of the commission, city staff recommends that the city commission assist in establishing a formal charter review committee, and develop a formal timeframe for conducting the appropriate public meetings regarding potential city charter amendments desired by the city commission. Uh, city staff anticipate charter amendments to be put forward for the November 2001 election, so essentially, we're looking at, I believe, city recorder, a 2000, September 2001 timeframe, correct?
Aye.
And you can disregard my reason for the recommendation-
Yes, I-
...because I carried it over from the last staff report, unless Ms. McNeese would really like to give input on the charter amendments.
Yes, I didn't understand that, but-
No, I'm sorry, that was my mistake.
You're stuffing the packets again with the wrong information.
I can't blame anybody else, unfortunately, even though there's a lot of department directors out here.
Well-
But yes, we're looking at, sometime in September, we need to get these charter amendments, if we're going to do it for the November 2001 election, so, um-
Well, we, I guess we need some sort of a suggested meeting schedule, and-
Yes.
-we need to suggest the membership, and-
Yeah, and essentially, we're looking for directions, so mayor, if you want to work with myself, um, and we would then create correspondence for the commission.
All right, I'll collect recommendations from the, the commissioners.
Okay.
I'm going to make a suggestion, if I may, because mine is the only attachment.
Yes.
It was the only one received to date, that's why.
I'm sure you do.
Yeah.
But, since I've, since this is here, I, I do know that the CIC has expressed, uh, interest in having representation on this.
Yes, they have.
That would make sense.
A couple, a couple of the amendments that I've recommended, well, more than one, but, uh, I think it would probably be a benefit to ask, uh, the planning commission to put forward a representative, uh, in terms of the residential growth cap, and, uh, maybe parks and rec, in terms of a couple of the, uh, issues that actually relate to, uh, parks designation, uh, on, uh, on the, uh, on those amendments, and so, that's recommendations I'd have.
CIC, okay. What, what, is there a, is there a commission pleasure as to the number of members that you would wish to have?
An odd one.
Yeah, I, I assume like, s- s- seven or nine, I mean, seven or nine, or, like, two commissioners?
I think we probably need, uh, some of, some legal experience, that if we can get an attorney who might be on this, too, to help advise. Yes, yes, please. We appreciate any input.
My name is Derek Benville, chairman of the CIC. Um, actually, I, I didn't get my packet, so I apologize for that in regards to the agenda, and I had thought that this was brought up in the, uh, last commission meeting, which was, uh, what, July 5th, which was an odd, odd one, because it was on a Thursday, because I failed to do an obligation I was supposed to do as CIC chairman, and that was write a letter to you guys, to the city manager, and, uh, suggesting that at least, uh, five members of the CIC would be part of the charter review committee, and I, I didn't, uh, I didn't do that in time for this. But, uh, since, uh, we have a, a lot of tools to, uh, get the information out in regards to newsletters, general, uh, membership meetings, um, we feel that we have a, a good, uh, tool to get the, the information out in regards to the charter review committee, we, uh, we represent a lot, and when it comes to citizen involvement, so we would like to make sure that we are involved with that, uh, charter review committee, so, thank you.
Good, and we're happy to have the input. So, you've heard a few, we'll go from there, we'll-
Yeah, mayor, you and I can work together and-
Could I, could I pose a question? Is, is, the charter amendments, they don't require a double majority or anything of that nature, I'm going to pose the question, is there an urgency for the 2001 election?
It's up to us.
It's up to us.
Yeah.
I think, I think we have to form a charter, a committee as soon as possible, I, I would not want to rush their review.
I understand that.
Great.
Yeah.
So it could be-
Do it carefully, if it works out, we don't make the time deadline.
That's, that's perfect, we were just trying to get, as you know, the commission desired to get this moving forward, and we want to just follow through and get that review process going.
Good, all right.
Okay, great.
Thank you for that.
Uh, the next item, agenda item 6.4, is the emergency communications for park hosts. Mayor members of the commission, some of you may have some background or experience on this matter. Uh, Ms. D Craig is here to follow up on this if necessary. Um, I believe Commissioner Neely brought this to our attention first, and this is kind of a direction item from the commission to staff as to what your pleasure is at this point.
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, because I've had occasion to have dead cell phones, i- is it true that even a deactivated cellphone will dial 911?
Yes, that is correct.
Yes, as long as it's been charged.
Yes.
If you have a current, if your battery is charged, you can dial 911 from any cellphone, whether you currently have a service or not.
Oh, okay.
So don't throw them away from now on.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I just have, the question, the only question I have on the region, this is, this midnight, it, what time did park close, you saw the cur, doesn't it 10 o'clock?
Yes.
And, and people are in there still at midnight?
Sometimes, yes.
Causing some difficulty?
Yes.
And, um, there's no way to correct them into, is there, is that, is that something that happens quite regularly? I mean, that people are in there quite regularly?
Frequently, people walk into the park after the park is closed, even though the gate is locked.
And there's nothing we can do about it, then?
Not unless we have people patrolling the park at night.
Mm-hmm. Well, do, do we get, do we have patrol go down there at night at some time?
No, on, we only respond if there, I mean, unless the chief says something differently, it's my understanding, we respond to complaints, that we do not normally go down and lock the gate and drive through the park, we don't have that sort of staffing, and parks does not.
Uh, Commissioner Hewitt has a question or comment?
I appreciate that, I'm just curious, you know, so we have a time limit on the park of 10 o'clock. We have, and, and that, and that's the rule, that we have up here decided that's the hour the park closes, but we don't enforce, we don't enforce because we don't have the personnel and the equipment.
That's correct.
And I hear that so often, and each time we pass a, a rule or regulation, then I'm, then I'm told that, well, we're shorthanded, and I'm never told that when regulations are passed. Uh, it just, it just never fails to surprise me that, that we announce to the public then that, hey, people are down there, and we're not, we're really not going to do anything about it unless something happens, so I just wonder, why do we have a, why do we have a, uh, 10 o'clock, uh, curfew? Because people that obey the law will obey that curfew, and others won't, is that, you know, I mean, I just ask that question.
Well, we secure the gates at that time, we do not-
I'm sorry?
We secure the gates to our parks at that time.
I understand that, but the people that decide that they don't care about the gates they're going through, we never send a patrol car to look down and see if anyone was in there. Is that right? We don't, in other words, they're so busy doing other things that we can't go down there once in a while to look.
I want to clarify something, we regularly run people out of parks after closing time. However, she is also right, that I would probably guess we have never unlocked the gate routinely, just to drive down there, if there had not been a complaint that somebody was down there on foot. Now, we may get a complaint from the host, or somebody, that somebody is down along the river, and then we would go down there, but I would find it quite unusual that we would, on routine patrol, unlock the gate and drive down in there.
But you do look down there?
We are at all the parks, and regularly run people out, and very occasionally, end up taking actual enforcement action against people for being in the parks after hours.
So that, it is happening, that we're-
Typically-
I'm told we're not, and I'm told we are.
Typically-
Well, I mean, they, they do routine patrols throughout the entire city, parks are included in that, but they don't go down and unlock gates and go in.
I don't think I asked that question, I asked if, if we went down there. I didn't mean, I'm sorry if you misunderstood me, it seemed like people do that quite often, but I would say this, I, I asked the question, do we look down there, basically?
As part of routine patrol, yes.
And the answer is yes, and I appreciate the answer.
Commissioner, Commissioner Hewitt, I think you had a question or a comment.
Well, my, my question is, if we've got people that we have as park hosts, we have three of them, right?
Yes.
That's what the paperwork here says.
In that park, we have three of them.
Uh, to me, it's like, it's a no-brainer. You're going to offer them whatever it takes to make it safe for them. 911, and it's a, it's an old phone, and you, and you find some batteries for it at a nominal cost supposedly, and so they can call 911 and talk to them, and I, I wouldn't care if we had to pay for the phone, I mean, let's get some, something with safety in there. My concern is, is that we don't have somebody, not just the park host, but an emergency the park host may walk on top of. I mean, obviously, these park hosts were, a couple of them were attacked.
One of them was attacked when he put himself into a situation, which was a domestic situation, instead of going to the payphone and calling the phone. The other park host was not on official business, he was in fact probably doing something illegal, and he was returning back to his, his home where he stays.
Okay, now, my, my question then is, is that person still a park host, and if so, why would he still be a park host?
Yes, he is still a park host.
Why?
And I can't prove that he was doing something illegal, but he told me he was returning from fishing, and fishing is not allowed after dark.
Okay.
I guess, can I follow up on that, Gary?
But I mean, he was not in an official capacity, their official capacity basically is a daytime job, and we give them a place to stay at night, because they have a daytime job. We have had one request for a cellphone, a couple of the other park hosts that I have talked to said, well, I wouldn't carry it anyway, and if I got attacked from behind, this particular gentleman said, I got attacked from behind, I wouldn't have had time to pull it out.
Well, the follow-up to, to Commissioner Hewitt's question is, um, if, e- even if he wasn't fishing, if the park closes at 10, and it's a daytime job, what was he doing in the park at midnight?
Well, if you are staying in the park, you have the ability to walk out into the park, and walk down to the restroom, and various other things, that's the nature of having an RV park, they're not limited to staying in their rigs.
Okay.
Okay, I, yes, yeah.
Because I, I assume, although the focus has been on parking park, we would make this available to other-
If we decide to do this, we will make it available to other, if your druthers are that we provide them with phones that are actual, have service, then we would need to look at some very stringent requirements.
I think, first of all, I think this, this is a no-brainer, whether somebody was engaged, whether somebody behaved kind of stupidly in one case, and was doing something illegally in another, the point is the potential is there in any case, and this seems to be a cheap way to deal with it, and, uh-
I guess my question to, yeah, and my question, I guess, to the city attorney is, does this in any way make us more liable for their actions during the time that they're technically not our volunteers?
I can't imagine that taking the step of providing something where they, they can have better access to call emergency help when needed would increase our liability. Um, you know, anytime the city takes an action, there's potential for liability, but I, I would rather be defending a case where you said we've taken more, we've taken a greater step by providing this telephone to them than not.
There is no financial impacts here, so, I mean, we, we'll just round up some used cell phones and buy some batteries.
I agree with Commissioner Hewitt, and, and I think we're all agreed on this.
And I think, I think, you know, my second, my second idea of going and supplying phones you can actually use would be my second choice. My first choice is the old phones, that if they dial 911, they can talk to somebody at that emergency station.
Right, they can get 911.
Thank you for this, appreciate it. Got direction? Okay?
Agenda item 6.5, mayor members of the commission, this was the agenda item that was added at the last minute for your consideration. This is a proposed settlement agreement with Emmett Brundage. As you know, mayor members of the commission, I won't review the whole issue. Um, the direction is to allow the city manager entering into the attached settlement agreement with Emmett Brundage LLC to resolve all pending claims between the city and Emmett Brundage.
That means I won't have to go down and take, give my deposition.
That's-
If the settlement goes through, your deposition won't occur.
Well, that's what 200 somehow.
I was going to say, there you are. Any comments, gentlemen, are you ready to vote on it?
Of course, here we're at the final stage of a long process, is it, you cannot answer this question, and I'll, and I ask it, and you don't give me any trouble, this is within range, it was actually recommended by a certain judge.
That is correct.
All right, is there a motion to approve?
I move, approve, and get this matter out of the way.
There's a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Holliday?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner Alex?
Aye.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Aye.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Aye.
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Mayor, members of the Commission, before you move to the consent agenda, could I ask Mr. Kabaisman to introduce a colleague of his?
Yes, please.
From Preston Gates and Ellis at this time.
You bet.
Actually, we have two in the audience tonight. The first is Steve Worts, who will be talking to you at an executive session after this is over, and that's Mr. Worts. Then we also have Chris Campbell, who is a summer associate who currently attends Leamont University and is with us for the summer.
We're only paying for one, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
We're glad you're here, thanks for coming.
They always say that.
Hope you learned something.
His first name was Steve?
Yeah, first name was, Steve, okay. And you've been there how long?
How long have I been a lawyer?
No, with the firm, with the firm.
Ten years.
Ten years, okay. That longer than you, Bill?
By a few years.
Why wasn't the exec session noticed?
Yeah, we didn't have him notice in the exec session, is it on?
No.
We have an item we need to do tonight.
Yes, Mayor, it would be for potential purchase of property in the Clackamas Cove area.
Can you read the numbers? Yeah, we need to read the numbers, we're not there yet.
Yeah, we're not, we're on consent agenda at this time.
We just have one more item here, it's consent agenda, it's only one, and I can explain, we have qualifications for the Historic Review Committee, and one of those is a citizen from the McLaughlin District, and fortunately, we had someone step forward and volunteer, and Maggie and I have talked with him, and we're quite satisfied to be an excellent addition, and so, unless there's some objection to it, I will hereby make the appointment to Rick Winterhalter, who is also Vice Chair of the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association. So that appointment is completed.
Rick, is, does McLaughlin have actually co-chairs, is that correct?
That is correct.
Did I say that? I didn't say it right.
You did, you just said it was co-chair.
Well, I thought vice. I, I'm sorry, whatever it was. I misspoke myself. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, before you close the meeting, I have, I have something I have to tell the Commission here tonight, and it's, it's not, it's not something that I relish, but I have been having some, it's given, I've given this a lot of thought, and I'm resigning from the Commission, and the, I have reasons for it that I'm not going to detail, and I've, it's not something that's easy for me. I've been honored to serve the city of Oregon City for 15 years, almost, and been elected four times, probably by accident, but they happened to put me in there. But the fact is, I'm happy to resign my position, and I, and I want to announce that tonight so the whole city knows, and it probably happened to be partying tomorrow because of this. But I want to say before I do leave this position, I have enjoyed working with the staff here, and enjoy working with you guys up here, and I think that this city's in good hands. I have, think that the mayor has served us well, and has had, all of us up here have had, the city in mind was our first priority, and I would like the people to keep that in mind when there's a lot of issues that come forward that are hard to resolve, that we, as Commissioners, as your representatives, have resolved some of these issues. And I feel that I'm leaving this in good hands, although, although, I was going to say there's no missing woman, and I haven't talked to the police or anything like that, I'm not resigning for that reason. But, but the fact is, I, although these guys have voted wrong on several occasions, and tonight being one of them, that's not why I'm leaving, but I want, I do have some, some things I have to take care of, and I'm sorry about it, and I, that's it. And I give everybody here an A as far as what they've done, and I think the staff is trying their best to do what they can with the little resources that we have, and I'm not leaving because the city's in dire difficulty, I'm leaving because I might be in some dire difficulty, so, that's why I'm doing this.
Well, Commissioner, you may have been elected by accident the first time, but if I looked at the records correctly, you received more votes the last two times you ran than any other candidate, as far as I can find in the record, and that shows how much the citizens think about you and your efforts for the city. And we're going to see you again here a little while, we can't let you go without some sort of a send-off, but this is a surprise to us all, and we're not prepared to kick you out the door yet, so, but we understand your, we accept your reasons, we, most of us know why, and we appreciate all you've done for this city, and I'm sure that...
Well, I'll save my comments till the official party, I guess.
Me too. I do have a couple things.
Yes, we'll go on to that, then, just a couple more items, Commissioner?
Probably the first, first one first, I did leave a message, and I don't know if they're, you know, prepared to respond to it, but there is kind of a issue on the Cove breach, and I think we're hitting a snag in terms of one of the agencies, and I don't know, I requested we could have had a brief update tonight, I've requested one, at the, is that possible?
Could you fill us in?
Thirty seconds or less?
No. Yeah, this is an important one.
Well, we submitted our proposal to National Marine Fisheries and Corps of Engineers, and that was in May, early May, when we finished the design of the slope stabilization project on the peninsula of Clackamas Cove, and what we found, we met with the NIMPs, National Marine Fisheries representative, two weeks ago, and he had some concerns about the proposed stabilization strategy that we had proposed. So, we, he hadn't read all of the materials yet, so we thought, well, you know, once he reads the report, he looks at all the alternatives reviewed, he looked at, he looks at the public input, et cetera, that perhaps he would see it in a different way. And then we also met with him on site yesterday and did a pretty thorough field trip, and at the end of that visit, site visit, he was not able to give us any comments, other than he would like to meet again in a couple of weeks and look at other ways to improve the salmon habitat along that stretch of the river. So, we cannot do anything without a permit, with, NIMPs does not actually issue a permit, but they bless your project, and the US Fish and Wildlife also comments on the project, and at this point, they appear to be having some concerns as well. So, neither of them, neither of the agencies will give us formal comments at this time, and we will meet with them again in two weeks and look a little further up the basin and try to listen to what they're saying, and we hope by then they will have reviewed all of our written materials as well, and...
What does two weeks do to us in terms of our timeline?
We won't be doing it this summer. The in-water work window was July 15 through August 30 for the Clackamas River, and...
So essentially, he has shut us out for this year.
Yes, that's correct.
So, you can take all the time you want to review it.
That's right, yeah. And we'll work with them, it gets into, we'll start looking at other feasibility issues if indeed they have some other alternatives that appear to protect the salmon habitat or restore the salmon habitat in that area. We'll certainly review them, but our project team also understands that there's other criteria that we have to work with, and that could be cost. It is cost, so, so we'll be seeing what they have to say, and they might find that after discussing it, investigating it further, that they find that what we're proposing is indeed a good solution, but they're not there yet.
And so, we have a, we have a bid, a contract for a certain amount of money, we're probably are going to be reviewing that because years' time will add some cost to it.
That's correct. We'll have, we'll likely have to go up to bid again with a whole new, we'll either use the exact same contract documents, or we may have different ones at that time.
Commissioner Neely, raise your hand.
In the highly unlikely event that in two weeks they come, both the agencies come to you saying, you know, this is a great idea, we're dealing with a low water year, it's possible that work could be done outside of the water, and whether we could get some extension on that because of it being a low water year, I think it's highly unlikely, but something that could be explored, should things, should I say, quote, "go our way" in the next couple of weeks?
We might be able to, if it does, if we see it doesn't start raining, and if it looks like we can get the Corps of Engineers permit to go ahead and go, go with the project, we would ask for an extension on the in-water work period. Problem is, our contract documents right now stated that we would award the contract within, I think it was within 60 days of, of the bid opening, and that was up July 15. We talked to the contractor, the contractor's willing to grant us an extension of that as well, but we also don't want to just keep him wondering and waiting because likely there's other work that he's got to get going on, and once he gets into another project, his crews and equipment may not be available, but we'll keep an ongoing discussion with him if it looks like we could have some positive results.
Commissioner Holliday?
Well, my concern is, is more along the lines of, we kind of dodged the bullet this winter, given the fact that we didn't have any high water. It's not, I mean, you know, that's not a big gamble here, you know, it happens on a fairly regular basis. So, is there any pressure we can apply through our federal elected officials or any of those kinds of things to, to maybe press the issue a little bit? I'd be real concerned if we get into, you know, November, December, January, February of 2002, and then we find out that, you know, we've got triple the volume of water coming down the Clackamas, and we're in imminent danger of a breach, and all of the work that we've put into this is going to go for naught, and we probably won't be able to get an emergency blockage permit or whatever that might be at that point in time. I mean, if some of us need to, to call Senator Smith or Senator Wyden or whoever, do we need to do that? Is that something we could accomplish?
I welcome, I welcome you to make an attempt. I think when it comes to the Endangered Species Act, there's pretty rigorous requirements on the review of the project and their approval of the project, but certainly, it's worth a try.
This is the chap who closed down the county over on Sunnyside.
Actually, it's, I think it's a different individual, but it's the same agency.
Agency, I mean, yeah, right, yes. Commissioner Hewitt?
Does that agency, the, the, the NIMPs is what they're called, the National Marine Fisheries, does that agency have a new director at this time?
I think they do. I know they've just changed, they've done a lot of personnel changing and...
Would you mind emailing me that director's name and phone number if you can locate that?
Sure.
Same for me.
Yeah, this is, this is an issue that I think the director is trying to change the flavor of the National Marine Fisheries from coming, becoming a hard sledgehammer to all jurisdictions, and I think, I think his task is, is monumental of what that new director has to do, and I know that you don't come in as a new director and, and turn the ship upside down. But I think in this case, there might be, as Mr. Holliday pointed out, some, some real need to get somebody aware that somebody's going to take responsibility if, if we have a major problem in our city based on their inability to do it in timely manner, so, but those are the issues that I'm going to bring up. Yeah, I, I've got no problem with individual commissioners writing a letter, but if, if we've got a majority of people that want to move this direction, I would suggest that we actually move that the city manager and the mayor actually write the, the director of NIMPs, indicating the importance of this and indicating the support, I believe, that we've had from the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife.
Yes, we have.
Is it formal, though? I know we've had individuals supporting it.
Yeah, and I think I spoke, I meant to say Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife, I think I said US earlier.
That's what puzzled me, yeah.
Yeah, it's the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife.
That also has some reservations now.
Yes.
Okay, now, has the US Fish and Wildlife Service said anything?
My understanding at this point is US Fish and Wildlife are not involved.
Okay.
Because these particular species are not under their jurisdiction.
Right. But in any case...
That's where they're not wildlife.
That was going to be my...
They're not, they're not, they're not marine fish.
It's the marine piece, right?
It's a marine, they are marine fish, so US Fish and Wildlife isn't involved.
What are you, what are you asking?
I'm suggesting that the, the letter, actually, a letter be drafted under the signature of both our city manager and our mayor, that doesn't preclude us as individuals doing things, but if it's a sense of a commission, I prefer to do it that way, and I so move. Okay, I second.
That's fine with me. Looks like it's unanimous, want to call the roll?
Can you hear that?
Yeah.
Shall I?
Yes, please.
Aye.
Commissioner Holliday, thank you. Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner Alex?
Aye.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Aye.
Mayor Williams? Aye.
Wait, 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 we've got to do a whole lot of other things. He just voted in support of trying to fix the breach of the... Are there a list of things that we need to do to get in the boat?
Very good.
Let's bring up the question.
I would more comment on that issue, I thought, well, I wasn't...
The other things are...
You're no longer here, so...
The other, the other things are quick because all I'm suggesting, to the, to the city manager, to the city manager, I'm suggesting that we have an update in the, maybe within the next commission meeting or two, on the potential of the lighting ordinance, and also on the situation with the South End Fire Station.
The, the outcome of the meeting between the city and TVFNR, our intergovernmental, was to establish a task force made up of members of TVFNR, Oregon City, and Clackamas One, Fire District Clackamas One, and to see if we can arrive at a solution. So, that's what we're in the process of doing.
On another issue, Mayor members of the Commission, as you know, the county is having their retreat at the Timothy Lake on the 26th and 27th of this month. I was asked by staff at the county to see if any commissioners were interested in attending that.
I'll be out of town, so I can...
Commissioner Holliday?
I'll be gone.
Okay, great. Are there any others that would wish to attend?
Wish to attend?
In the woods with the county commissioners, how can you miss that?
Can you attend if they couldn't my name now?
But we're doing it, it's not at Timothy Lake, right? It's at Old Collins?
I will verify that. I, I, it was representative to me, it's at Timothy.
He's been on the committee. Anything else, gentlemen, before we go to the executive session? Yes, sir.
I've been thinking about my request to have an urban renewal meeting, and I'm just going to come out, straight out, with a motion to move that the city manager make notification and we hold an urban renewal meeting at 6:00 PM on the 8th of August.
Second.
Anyone, anyone differ from that?
No, it does, it does. I prefer to, if I can go to impact meetings, I'd like to, but, and that's when they are, I'm our representative. Is there a reason that it can't be done at 7:30? No, no reason it couldn't be done at 7:30. If they're 7:30, then it doesn't put me in buying. Okay, 7:30.
7:30's fine.
Change the motion to 7:30, it's second approved?
Call.
Commissioner Holliday?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner Alex?
No.
I shouldn't have made a big deal out of it.
Aye. Aye. If not, gentlemen, we'll...
Mayor Alex?
Yes, yes, yes.
Commissioner Hewitt, is there a formal agenda you'd like, or is that something I can...
No, it's, I'm sorry, no, there is no formal agenda, it's just, let's get everything on the table as we discuss, but I want this to be a urban renewal meeting, so if we need to vote on something, we have the power at that meeting to vote.
Okay, great.